Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
It's 5:30. Call this meeting for Rockingham School Board to order. Jason Benson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? I have one. Let others go first if they'd like, but. I'll go ahead. I would like to remove nine A review applicants for vacancy board members from the agenda, and here's why. And you guys can, you know, we choose otherwise. I'm happy to hear that. I don't think that adding somebody right now would be a benefit or would add value to our board, so we can revisit it later on. But at this point, I'd like to remove that from the agenda. Any thoughts from you guys?
Sounds good. I think right now what we have working forward is working well, and we need to stick the path at the moment until the time comes better.
I agree, George.
Are you okay, Priscilla? Okay. Thank you to those who expressed interest. I can tell you it wasn't many. And thank you. Keep doing what you do. All right, moving on. Review and approved board minutes for August 17. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? If so, I'd entertain a motion to accept.
I accept the minutes as written, George.
A second.
Second. Don't know if we need one, but.
Probably not. You know me, I can't figure this stuff out. All right.
When it work.
All right. Okay. Minutes approved, moving on. Communication and public comments. Chris, you got anybody over there?
Right now, the chat is not on. I would suggest that the board chair ask anyone who has a comment to turn on their audio or video or raise their hand.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
George, point of order. You need to roll call for the minutes.
Thank you, Priscilla, for the reminder. Backing up a little bit, roll call for approve the previous minutes of August 17. Jason Terry, on my first on my screen.
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
Jason Benson?
Hi.
Very good. Moving on. Communication and public comment. Anybody have in the public? If you have something to say, voice of opinion, anything like that, please feel free to. Now's the time. Feel free to speak up. I do have something that somebody sent me earlier, and they weren't going to be able to make the meeting. I assured them that I would relay it at the appropriate time. And it is as follows. I just wanted the board to know what a wonderful job Michelle Harrington is doing to facilitate VT VLC students. I have been emailing her probably daily with questions, and she always gets back to me with an answer, even if it is just, there will be an answer soon. Clearly, there will be a lot of hurdles we all need to navigate before the semester will start running smoothly. That's parents, teachers, administrators, IT, et cetera. I just wanted the board to know Michelle is doing a great job. Any other public comments?
I don't have any hands raised, so I'm think you're free to move on.
All right, moving on. Policies. Probably don't have any policies, right?
No, not at this time.
Reports, superintendent, central office, district updates.
Yeah, so thank you. So what I'm going to do is I created a month's newsletter that's going to be going out. I sent the first one out last Friday, and I went out to all the public in regards to, I should say elaborate on that. It went out to all families with students as well as board members. So what I do want to do is just get time to clear my screen and let you know where you can find the newsletter. So if you go onto the SU webpage, scroll down past the we log in for your Zoom meetings, and it's right here. So you just click, click on it, and that'll bring up the newsletter.
So save that root one more time.
Yep. Just let it. Internet's going a little slow right now.
Oh, I found it, never mind.
Well, as you, when you log into the site, if you scroll down to the bottom.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's pretty much what the newsletter looks like, but I'll back a little bit.
You know, it was pretty easy to find. It was just right at the upper level of that website and just scroll down to the bottom, and there was a link there.
Correct. So that would be. In that newsletter, there's a link at the bottom that any, anyone from the public who has a question for myself or anyone at the SU office that they would like that answer, they could email that question to me, and I'll include it into the next newsletter. So superintendent's reports. I'll be giving more detailed reports at the SU meetings. But for now, that's all the information you have is in that newsletter.
Questions? See that as a no. Moving on to principals' reports. Who would like to go first?
I'm happy to go.
Excellent.
Hello, everyone. And so much like I said at the SU meeting, we have had a successful and healthy start, and I truly believe that's to all of our planning and preparation and those extra days at the beginning of the year. Staff has been awesome. Families have been super supportive, asking terrific questions, and our students are awesome. It is so great to have them back at school, and they have adapted so well to our new protocols and procedures. So proud of them. Our health screenings are going smoothly. Our food service and delivery of the meals to the classes is working well. Our outdoor spaces are highly used, although we have had a little bit of vandalism, which has been a bit disappointing in taking some of the tent tie downs. But as far as the use of the spaces, teachers are definitely getting students outside often and a lot. We are working currently on building in. It's built into our schedule. It just needs a lift off. Open office hours throughout the day so that students that are working remote, if they have a question or need some support with their homework, there'll be someone there to ring into and help out. So that is something that we're working on currently. Our attendance has been really good. And I know Lynn mentioned it at the SU meeting, but I also just want to say, prior to the start of the school year, did some PD with two other elementary principals, and I know Carrie is thinking about doing it as well, but following the distance learning playbook by three top educational leaders, John Hattie, Doug Fisher, and Nancy Frye. And it was very informative, and the teachers stuck with it and learned a lot through it, I believe. And we're going to continue some of that work, build on that work as we move forward. But again, we have a super strong elementary principal group, and it's great working with the three other elementary principals in this SU because we accomplished a lot, and it feels really good. So, but we are off to a fantastic start, and huge thank you to my staff and to our families, and of course, to our students.
Any questions for Ms. Hazard? Priscilla?
Laura, is your attendance, your numbers the same as what you gave at the WNSU board, or have those changed?
Oh, as far as students that are with us, is that what you mean, Priscilla? Those are, those have remained the same. Would you like me to repeat them?
Not if they're the same, I have them.
Okay, yep, they are the same.
Any other questions for Ms. Hazard?
I wanted to comment one other thing, too. Rather than waiting till director's comment, I commented at the last, the WNSU meeting about the video that was put out by Laura's in her group, and it was excellent, and I hope some of you got to watch that as well.
Thanks for your kind words, Priscilla.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Ms. Kennedy, would you like to go next?
I surely would. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I pretty much echo Ms. Hazard's comments. We've had a great rollout. And again, I appreciate the flexibility from everybody with the change in the start time and get everybody ready in the half days last week. I think that really helped us be even stronger prepared for this week. So we talked to the teachers about juggling. So right now, they're doing the remote learning as well as the in-person learning. And so we apologize to a few parents. There's a few hiccups here and there, but overall, it's gone very well. We've had staff and students in the morning meetings. We've merged the students who are at home and then also in person as much as we can. And we did set up a help desk similar to what Saxon's River has, and we've sent a link out, and we'll put it out again on the Facebook page, which is a very good resource for families. If you're not friends with Rockingham Central School on the Facebook, you should be. And there's also a link as well on our page on the central, central page on the SU website, so you could look at that as well. But we were really checking on, you know, the families who are remote and making sure that they're not, you know, left behind. So we created this website, this help desk that's available through our Google Classroom, and families can access that. We are mindful that if you're just simply having an issue getting in, you won't be able to get to the help desk. So we've sent home paper copies of email addresses of staff who are available to support students and families that may be struggling. So each grade level has a support person in, you know, old school format of online for, you know, websites or at least an email, just so they can reach out and questions answered. And then the SU is also putting a help desk together as well for families just to make sure that nobody is sort of floundering and left aside, you know, as they're navigating the remote learning as well as the in-person. So this is, I will just reiterate to everybody, this is separate from the virtual, the VT VLC. So this is for the remote learning for the in-person hybrid part. So we appreciate everybody's flexibility, and we are just eager to continue on for a while and, you know, continue as we're going. So it's been a really great start of the year. We, again, the same thing with our health screenings are going very positively, and the staff, students, family, everybody has been fantastic in getting us to this point so far. Are there any questions that anybody has?
Priscilla?
Priscilla?
Again, I would ask on the numbers, are your numbers remaining stable, the ones that you gave at WNSU, or have those increased, decreased?
And there, there's a couple students that actually was added last week, and we have a new enrollment, but pretty much there are 132 students, so they're pretty much close to where they were exactly last week.
Okay, so then my next question would be on, I think it's third grade and fourth grade. You're, you were reflecting 13 on one day and 13 on the other for third and nine one day and 14. Now, some of those are special needs kids that come all four days. So the total would not be 26 and 23. What would your totals be?
So there's only one student in third grade, so it'd be 25. And then there's two students, so it'd be 21.
Okay. And you have, you're down one teacher due to teacher working at VT VLC.
We're down two teachers.
You have two teachers down. So does that mean you have two empty classrooms?
So no, because we've shifted some support personnel or in the Title I support personnel and, you know, the Title I teachers. We've shifted them over so that we're not having as much interactions between groups that are meeting for those. We've used those spaces. We have a space, we did put out a posting on school spring for a third teach, or a teacher for third grade and potentially fourth grade. Unfortunately, we've had very few applicants, and it's, it's not something that we've been able to find somebody just yet. But we did have the posting out there in case anybody was interested, and we could have the possibility of opening another classroom if we had, you know, somebody that was appropriate to fill the spot.
Okay, that, that was my, my next question. Thank you. And would you try to do it as maybe one teacher or two teachers saying 25 and 21? Would you need to split both of those classes down to, to an extra teacher? Or would you do a combination third, fourth?
It might be a combination third, fourth with potentially like if, right now for the hybrid, it might be a Monday, Tuesday, say, grade three, Thursday, Friday, and grade four, depending upon how the, this, you know, it looks in the future, but it could be potentially third, fourth grade split.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie, appreciate that. I'm glad to see you're settling in so nicely.
Thank you. Everybody's been very welcoming, and I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Ms. Kennedy? Ms. Bukowski, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening. I would reiterate the sentiments from Carrie and Laura. And I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end of my report. Priscilla, our enrollment numbers are fluctuating. We've had two new students enrolled in the past seven days. We've also gotten two students who left VT VLC at the end of last week. And so far this week, we've received two inquiries from families that originally signed up for VT VLC and are interesting, excuse me, interested in transitioning back to us. So right now, I have 169 students, and if those two students do choose to come back to hybrid learning, I'll be up to 171. Mr. Quadrell and myself have met. We've discussed the revisions that we need to make for our emergency planning, and we are talking those over with our teachers, and we plan on having our first drills the week of September 28. Our health screenings have gone really well, both for students and staff. We originally thought that our screenings might take to about 8:30, but we've been completing them by around 8:10. Therefore, as a staff, we met and we talked about revising our original time schedule. So we're adding, starting next week, five more minutes to the student lunch period and five more minutes to the afternoon movement break. We chose to add to those times because it provides additional mask breaks for our students. I chose to send a quick survey out to my teachers that consisted of two questions. The first question was, how did they feel the start of the school year has gone so far? And what concerns do they have as we continue to move forward? So a summary of the responses is, and I support this wholeheartedly, is they feel that our students have done a great job following the protocols. We got a couple issues to work out with social distancing, mostly when they're outside. The students appear to be happy. Our schedule and other organizational items have worked out well. And we do have, you know, some nuances such as we're escorting our students everywhere, which is not something we did in the past. You know, we had passing periods. So teachers and the students are all adjusting to that. Overall, the staff feels that the class sizes have made it really possible for us to adhere to the safety guidelines and to provide individual assistance to our students. My second question was, what concerns do they have? And most of their concerns are anxiety over the protocols for if we have a student that becomes ill with COVID or if there's an outbreak in the community served by WNSU. And this is especially true for teachers and staff that may fall in the high-risk categories. Teachers that have school-aged children have additional stress by the juggling of so many different schedules. And many of the responses also talked about that we really need to continue with caution because we feel it's nearly impossible to meet the safety requirements as they are if we were fully open. So I wanted to go ahead and share that because it was an anonymous survey, and I felt it was pertinent feedback for everybody. That concludes my report. Any questions? Priscilla?
First, I want to say I love your ideas on masking personally. I'm glad that you're giving them a little bit extra time, and I totally understand the anxiety that people are having. Anything different and any changes are always anxiety. And Fauci did, in his speeches today, say that continued diligence and continued watching for complacency and all that is crucial. How many are doing VT VLC from your school? How many teachers do you?
I have two teachers, a social, a social studies teacher and a special ed teacher.
Okay. And what about academic pacing? I mean, with just two days, it's really hard to do much academics. And I know it's only been a really short time, but I just.
And for those reasons, Priscilla, I have not pushed the academics. We've been told to really concentrate on the social emotional, so I don't feel that I could give you an appropriate response to the academics. We're still learning a lot about our students. We've only had the Cohort A for full days this week. And so Cohort B is for full days next week. Excuse me, Thursday and Friday. So I really don't feel that I have a response to that question.
Okay, and that's certainly understandable. It's just, I didn't know what your, you know, if you could project what your, what your goal is, you know, coming up. That's the only thing I was thinking about.
I can tell you that, you know, of course, our goal is to keep our students moving forward and not only from where they currently are, but measuring their growth over the course of the school year. And when we do the MAP assessment coming up, that'll give us a really good baseline, and we'll have the mid-year check-in. And then at the end of the school year, we'll be able to see the growth. And unfortunately, we weren't able to give that assessment at the end of last school year.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate everything.
Any other questions? Ms. Bukowski? Very good. Thank you all. Thank you all. Where are we? Moving on to the business office, financial report. Laura, you're up.
Hi. I did send the report to everybody, but it was just ahead of time, so we'll have a little bit of time to review it for our next meeting. But if you guys have any questions, because you just got to it already, we could just go over them. Right now, the office, we have three staff. We adjusted our schedule. That way, we are more available for everybody. We do receive appointment by schedule. I have mentioned that already as well as any calls, emails. So that's what we have right now.
Does anyone have any questions for Flora in regards to the financials that she sent?
I've got a question, Flora, and maybe, maybe this isn't the platform, but in regards to signing warrants, and maybe, please tell me if we can clear this up offline. That may be more appropriate, but there, there were some, some issues today that was sent out about signing warrants. Is that something that would be worth talking about now or better suited for offline, too? It seems like a process, possibly a process issue, so.
Yeah, it will be something that we'll need to maybe adjust the process. I've been adjusting and reviewing a lot of the processes that the office have, and I've been taking it on one at a time basis. For the warrant signing, I do know that, you know, there was like some, we will get like one signature, and then it's always the issue with trying to get a second signature. So maybe it's just trying to see how can we just make the process better? I don't know all the step for the process, but I did read the email today that you guys have sent to Marlene and everything. So we are going to see how can we just make it better to just avoid that. But I've been taking everything one step at a time. But I did read it. I did look into it. So maybe it's just try to figure out how it could work out better for everybody because it shouldn't be a reason why we get only one signature, and then it's just floating around to get a second one.
Well, I can tell you from my point of view, I guess I wasn't sure that it needed another one, so. But anyway, I'm happy to discuss the details of that in the, in the next couple of days so we can get it right.
Email me. My phone number, my direct line is on, on all the emails that I sent. We could just go from there, maybe, and we could just like figure out something that will work out for everybody.
Any other questions for Flora? Go ahead, Jason.
Hey, Flora. Just want to say, I think you're doing a great job. I really liked the spreadsheet you sent out last week for the WNSU board. I think it's really, really good so far. On the warrants, who, who has eyes on those as far as, is that something that you kind of look over and kind of question? Or is it, you know, how does that work? How's it going to work like on a monthly or like at the end of the year? I'm assuming, based on what we've talked about previously, that, you know, that you're going to kind of look at those things. I don't want to manage it. I, I want, you know, that's, it's not my job. So I just was wondering if that's something you do. Thank you.
So like I said, I could speak with any of you, and we could just look into it. If it's something that I will need to manage, I will definitely do. So that way, we could just have a better process in place because I know it's something, it's an important document. At this point, is it was going through Marlene, and then from there, she would just get all the signatures. I don't really know all the steps or who was supposed not to be in charge. You know, this is my third week. But it's just me trying to figure out all those things, you know, which one is each person's role and adjusting and trying to maybe put something in place that work out better. As for the reports, I am working as well with a report that it will fit better everybody, that you guys can understand better. One of our e-finance contact, Leslie. So we could have like maybe a cost barrier report, something that is more like black and white for you guys that you could see, you know, what is the expenses, what you guys are budgeted. But for now, that's a report that I'm sending until she could finish adjusting the reports and having something that is more feasible for everybody.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, just to address Jason's question. Yeah, each board has one of the two people that are elected to sign a review warrants. Once they've had them and they signed off on them, the business office goes through. That's the current process right now. So we're, we're looking to add a second signature to the warrants.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, Jay.
Oh, sorry, I thought I was on mute. So, so Chris, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you. So if, like, say, George signs them and he's responsible for them, would that?
Would that mean that he's also responsible for watching the spending and then Flora kind of looks at him too? I just, I know we're spending a lot of stuff on stuff that we need, obviously. I just don't want to, at the end of the year, be like, oh, oops, we overspent our budget. So I just wanted to get a better understanding, I guess.
Yeah, what, you know, and so anyone who's signing off on the warrants, you know, they're going through and they're checking them and, you know. So they may have questions that they bring to a particular board meeting in regards to. You know, what was this bill that we paid for this? If, if there was some, if it wasn't clear. So it's just a matter of multiple sets of eyes. And so. You would have, like I said, the board go through them, sign off, bring up any questions they might have. About what they're signing with the business office, the business office, once they get the signatures. They go through and they process the payments. But not until the board has approved and, you know, that would be the time that the, the ones who are reviewing and signing would. Ask those questions to the, to the business office. And if the business office doesn't have the answers. Then we query the principals, so they're comfortable signing off on stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Flora? Okay, moving on, S U board. Think most of us were there at the board, last board meeting, is that? Right? I don't know if there's any real updates. There was some conversation about the Zoom chat. I don't see that as being a big issue here. If it is, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but. I'm okay with, with that portion of things, the way that it has been. I know that the chairs now have a Zoom. Account, so at some point, it looks like we may be, may be hosting, hosting the meetings, but. Other than that, I don't think there was a, a whole lot. Still the question of exploring. Ways to get kids more instruction. But I think, you know, we may discuss that a little bit down in this agenda. Any other recollections from the S U board meeting? Priscilla, go ahead.
On the chat thing, I really feel that for our board meetings, it should be on, we should not be using the chat. That's, that's public back and forth in lots of conversation.
Priscilla, hang on a second. This isn't a point where we're actually discussing that. It was just a recap of, of the S U.
So we can discuss it at another time.
If we want to discuss that, we can add it to the next agenda. Again, I don't feel like it's. If you, if you, you know, feel it is, we can, we can talk about it, but we can do that next time if you, if you'd like to. Any other recollections from the S U board meeting from those that attended? I think that was about it. I mean, there was obviously to it, but. Nothing that I don't think needs to be brought up. Moving on committees, I don't think we have any committee stuff.
I, as far as the negotiation committee, I have no new news. That's all.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was thinking that earlier. And just as a reminder, if there is news from that, that may be. You know, appropriate for public discussion, we'd want to enter an executive session at, at a later point, but thank you for reminding me about that. Any other committee stuff? Moving on, unfinished business for discussion and action, if any. Who's up first? All right, I'll be the. I'll start here, so. At some point. We, we do need to start discussing how we're going to get kids more instruction and I'll back up just a little bit. And I will say that, Chris, I had asked you this rhetorical question in the email I sent. And it's a little uncomfortable, but how? Are we comfortable with running a hybrid model for an entire school year? And then the follow-up question to that is, should we be comfortable with that? And I don't know the answers. I'm not saying anything one way or the other. I, I feel like. I just feel like we need to be. Making some sort of, having some sort of communication or some sort of effort to explore ideas. Maybe we don't get there. I don't know. Maybe we don't get to full-time instruction. Maybe, maybe it's not realistic. I'd like to see, see some sort of dialogue, communication, brainstorming, exploration of ideas. You know, that type of thing somewhere along the line and. And as a reminder, that was kind of part of the condition of our adopting the hybrid plan for this district. I know we're just getting started, so it's really hard to focus on anything else. And I don't really want to deter from that. I just want us to be thinking about how we're going to move forward. We know that, we know that we can move backwards if we have to, right? Jason, I see you. Just give me a quick second. We know we can move backwards and that's okay, but let's explore all areas. You know, if we get an opportunity, you know, in three weeks to, hey, let's open this thing up. How are we going to do it? And I, I think those kinds of conversations need to be had. And whether we get there or not, again, is not necessarily the, what I'm saying, it's. We need to be ready for, for every, everything, so. I'm encouraging us to find a way to communicate and, and, and find a way to have some, some, some. Dialogue surrounding that subject as I know it's uncomfortable for some, it's uncomfortable for me sometimes. But we can't just have a one, one plan. We need to have plans for all different directions.
Do you want me to, do you want me to respond, George, real quick in regards?
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, so, you know, are, you know, do we want to remain in remote instruction for the entire year? No. Do we want to continue to move forward in, in the best way, in the safest way possible to get kids back into the schools on a regular basis? Absolutely. I think the, the biggest thing that we're struggling with right now. Is that it's the, you know, we, it's the social distancing. You know, we want to make sure that as we bring kids back, that we're still following it, you know, they, you know, hopefully, you know. And time will tell, you know, what the state does in regards to social distancing. Because if the state continues to say three to six feet, I mean, it, it leaves us at a standstill in regards to. How many kids we can, you know, ultimately, we can't get everyone back in the building. But as far as the administration goes, you know, we're, you know, we're constantly looking at, trying to find ways to, you know, to bring the kids back. You know, the next big question would be, okay, what would the difference be if we went from six feet to three feet? How many more kids could we get into the building on that? But it only really not even having the kids, all the students yet for a full day. It's hard to. Predict that, but it does not stop in us as an administrative team to come up with plans. You know, because it's really, we don't make the decision as a school system when we go to stage three of this, this, this COVID process. That's something that the, the state directs us to do through the governor. So, but you know, as an administrative team, we're constantly looking to be prepared, you know, just like we have from the beginning. We want to have a plan in place for as many different things as possible. And I think for us moving forward is, we want to start, we want to bring kids back as soon as we can, but also as safe as we can. And right now, I think, like I said, one of the obstacles is we need to have the social distancing in place. And so what does that look like? So, you know, as an administrative team, that's what we'll be looking at. You know, one of the things that we'll, we're going to brainstorm about. So it's constantly being looked at as the administrative team. You know, but our hands are tied in a lot of these things and it's, you know, it's frustrating on, you know, in many different ways.
Jason, do you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Pratt, you pretty much answered the question. Thank you. But what would it take for the state to get us to phase three? Because I, I just would like, I don't know, for me, I would like an update. And like, what is the timeline to getting there? You know, and the opening school assessment, the plan was written for, for six weeks. And I know it's only been a week and we've already discussed it and I don't need to rehash it. And we all want the same thing. You want the same thing that I do and I want the same thing you do. So, you know, I don't want to fight about it. But I just want to, you know, move forward and, you know, there, there's supposed to be a task force and we're supposed to be having updates regularly. So just what, what else do we need to prove to the state? Our numbers are, you know, even Fauci said today, we're at point zero two positivity rate. And so I'm asking a lot of questions, so, you know, I guess in the update, what is the plan for the sickness? So that we don't have to start from square one. And that's what Fauci had said at his meeting today. You know, he wanted to know if there is a sickness, what, what would be the plan being for that? So the schools don't have to start at square one. So our numbers are super low and what does, what, what do we need to prove to the state?
Yeah, this, the state really, right now, we don't have a timeline from the state when we're going to be moving from. Level two to level three. There's no checks and balances in place to, to say, okay, are we getting close or not? So we, as, as school administrators, we don't have any of that information. All we can do right now is that each school has its own task force that we can, continues to meet. The S U tax force is, it meets on a regular basis as well, which is made up of other, the school principals and directors. And so, yeah, I mean, I don't have an answer to that question in regards to when the state decides to go from two to three. Your guess is as good as mine right now. And, you know, we haven't been able to get any of that information. Because I think it all is going to be based on, you know, the cases and what they're seeing, you know, throughout the state. And I think it's, it looks right now, it looks different throughout the state. I mean, for, you know, last time I checked, which was yesterday, this, this seven new cases in Wyndham County, twelve in the state and seven. And county, so it's, it changes each day. And I think, you know, the state's taking it slow. But we don't have any indication of what that looks like and how we get from level two to level three.
So just to follow up on that, if I may. Just that when we voted, you know, a few weeks ago, we voted for in person, so. You know, I, that, that's, that's what we wanted as, as a board. And then we, we changed our mind because it was several hundred people that showed up and, and said we needed a hybrid. And I just want to reiterate that our direction was, you know, a couple of weeks and then we look at it and then, then open. So I, I don't want to be, it feels, feels like I was sold a used car. And I, and I don't like that feeling, so. I'm not blaming you. I'm not blaming anybody. I just, I just. Everyone wants the kids to go back to school. We all do. And we all want Steve to, so tough situation, I guess.
I do have another question, but after, Priscilla, go ahead. You can, you can go first.
Do you want me to go now? Um, I was going to say that, yes, Chris, when we talked about this at our August 10th meeting. You're going to revisit it weekly, so I'm hoping that is happening on a regular basis. Because if we're looking at a zero point two percent rate in Vermont, which Fauci said was the baseline for starting. And that's based on other districts. Ours is still at zero percent. And there may be seven in Wyndham County, but they're all way south of us. They're not in our districts. And so holding off and basing ours on all of the other districts is not something I want to, you know, be looking at forever. I'd like you to, you know, be working on a plan. And you said you are planning to work on a plan. So that we are ready to move forward if we can decide. Because the state has also said either in week three or four, they're looking at prediction of going to stage three. They're already telling us we only need three to six feet for primary students. And our schools, from the numbers that I was given tonight. And in Saxon River and in Central, particularly if you can get that one other teacher or two other teachers. Would certainly be something that we should be looking at. Even if you want to start with moving to four days a week for them, so that we can start some academic progress. Because academic progress is, is not possible on a two-day schedule for students at the primary level. So I would be looking at that. I was pleased that Fauci said also that he is looking at a vaccine ready in November, December. And with dissemination in January, February, that really is, is astounding to me. When other people are saying, were saying other things last week, but he said reasonable effectiveness of seventy to seventy-five percent. And he said, yes, wear masks, yes, six feet, but with, with variation, which tells us we can go to the three to six. And Washington's frequently, so I really feel that it's imperative that we be planning. And have that plan ready to implement in less than a six-week timeframe if possible. Thanks. We do need policy goals by the, we also do need policy and goals by the, by the board. So we need that, that plan put out to us. Thanks, sorry.
Also, Priscilla?
Yeah, thank you.
Jason Terry, go ahead. Jason, hang on, before you do that, Jason Benson, if you have something that you would like to, to say at some point, just. I can't see your face, so I don't, your name isn't right in front of me. I know you're out there somewhere, but just, just, just jump in, okay? Jason Terry, go ahead.
So I'm looking at the. The plan that we got, the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Fall 2020 School Reentry Plan. And it says for level three and four, says low risk Vermont, level three and four, no community transmission. Then it says, no laboratory, laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the last fourteen days. So, you know, I'm assuming, you know, that's what it's written and then I, who, who wrote that? The, the state? And then it says we're going to look at it. This plan is in place for six weeks. So after fourteen days, if we still have those, technically, shouldn't we be in level three? I mean, that's the plan they wrote, so. I guess I'm asking that question because that, that's what, we're, we're, we keep following their rules consistently. So they, somebody has to say, yeah, you're following the rules. Yeah, you're in level three. So who's going to say that?
The state makes all, the state makes every decision about going from level two to level three. What you see in that document there, Jason, is cited from the state. That's the, the information they gave us. The state is the only one who can make that decision in regards to going from two to three.
So, so that, that's great. So in, in two weeks, in fourteen days, if everything's great, let's hope they say, yeah. Mr. Pratt can go level three. That'd be cool.
And we'll be ready to go if they do.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm rooting for you.
Priscilla, go ahead.
Can you tell us if there's been any progress on getting pairs for the buses? I know there's nine point five regular red pairs. And there's one person you said that had applied at the last meeting that we had. Have you had any more progress with possibly getting that? So that that can help with our prevention of temperatures. It may not even be COVID. But we can't necessarily determine it's not COVID and it means quarantine for those people on the bus if we put kids on the bus without. That monitoring, so that's a concern for me.
Whereas right now, we've only had one, we've only had the one applicant, but it's going to be a ongoing. As we continue to try to get health monitors on the bus. No changes since the last meeting.
Thank you. But you're working on it, which I appreciate.
Anybody else? Okay, so. I'm going to take it a little step further and I'm going to say, what if the state says? This is fully rhetorical. What if the state says, no change, all right, no change this year. All right, we go through this year, no change. Oh, going in next year, we're looking at the same type of thing. And the point of this question is to push the limits of what we're thinking is, is doable and not doable. I'm pretty sure the answer is no. We can't be satisfied with, with two to three days of instruction a week for a long period like that. I'm pretty sure the answer is no, we can't be satisfied with, with two to three days of instruction a week for a long period like that. So going back to our, our brainstorming, that is where I, what I encourage you, Mr. Pratt, and, and I, again, I, I'd be happy to join in with any type of brainstorming session exploration. A big part of my working career was solving problems, didn't always do it, but we tried to. It's all, that's all. It's all me personally, that's all I'm looking for, I want. All right, so we can't fit in this building, is there other buildings, is there, I mean, you can rent outdoor, you can rent portable classrooms, I mean, is it something that needs to throw money at? Is it, I, I'm just reiterating the fact that, and I don't want to say think outside the box because I know that's kind of been, we, you know, you guys have had to do that. So I want to continue to think outside the box, don't get, you know, just we can't fit them in the building and I think you understand where I'm coming from and I'm going to leave it at that. And I, and I appreciate the, you know, what you guys have been doing. And, and, you know, my kids have personally had a, had a great first week at school. And, you know, the at home part, we're still a little unsure of, you know, how, how things are rolling. But, you know, being so fresh and new, I think we'll, we'll get there. But anyway, I think, I think you all understand my, my sentiments and I'll leave it at that, so, so thanks. Anything else? New business for discussion? Don't think we have any new business? Any appointments? Any director's comments? What's up? Mr. Terry?
So, um, you know, being, being on the boards, so I'm on the Rocky Hand Board, WNESU Board, I'm on the negotiations committee. And it's, uh, it's interesting and it's a lot of learning. And, you know, it's, I, someone, I heard this somewhere and I can't remember who, 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 which person said it. But, uh, so it said, being a board member is a lot like playing chess, but you have no queen to play. So I, I thought that was, uh, you know, a, a lot of the information, sometimes I feel, could be wrong, that we don't get all the information. And I, and I, and I do know this, that I want the same thing that all of the administrators want and all of the teachers want, and they're all good people, and we all want what's best for the kids, bottom line. I've been very active with the VPA and the high school boards. I've requested a few things and hopefully, you know, some stuff happens. I'm very concerned, you know, just an update, I'm very concerned next week, high school level, there is lots of field hockey, soccer, you know, boys, girls, SATs next Wednesday, touch football starts next Friday. So and if we don't get to phase three, then those activities will not be games, they will be intramural scrimmages. So there won't, all those games next week will be canceled. So that's, it's very concerning. So that's why I would like to get to phase three as quickly as possible. You know, for, for, for the kids, for all of the kids. And, you know, I, you know, for, for the, for the administrators, Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Hazard, Ms. Bukowski, and Mr. Pratt, you guys are doing a pretty good job. And I've said that nothing, I've always said, nothing beats good management. You can come out with any spreadsheet you want, but it takes people to, to push those things. So continue, please, for all the kids to push and do the right thing and follow up diligently. And, you know, we're counting on you, so, you know, we need you, we need you now more than ever, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Benson, you with us?
I am here.
Any direct comments?
Yes, I'm just, just looking at the whole situation as it's going and if the state was to give us the green light, I'm hoping that all of our staff would be on board at the same point. If the state feels it's safe, I would hate to think that we would be held back because we have staff that is more concerned than our professionals at the state level have the knowledge of these things. You know, and I, I just, I'm pretty sure Chris Pratt has a pretty good handle on all of his staff underneath him and going forward. So I'm confident that the right choices are we made. But just want to stress that, you know, we need to forward everybody involved. Really just consider everything that we have to do going forwards to make sure it's a smooth and effective transition. And that's all.
Jason, Priscilla?
Yes. Um, one thing that Fauci said in his presentation today that really stuck with me was that it is not inevitable that we will have a second wave of COVID. Our state is a great model and it's been doing the right things. And there is no reason to expect that we have to have that wave as long as people continue to be, do what they are doing, that they are diligent and do not get complacent with this. I have every faith in our district and our teachers in being able to work with the students and the families to be able to avoid this and to protect their students. And I feel that they, once we get back with a little more in person, they can absolutely provide instruction for our students that is of an extremely high caliber. So I just have faith and I want to be positive. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. I don't have much, I know you guys have been working hard and I truly mean it when I say thank you. Again, just want to, I, I want to echo what everybody's kind of said, we all want the same thing. And I'm looking forward to trying to find ways to make that happen. And as much as it doesn't seem so all the time, I really appreciate you guys for what you're doing. So with that said, let's keep at it. Agenda items for next board meeting, Priscilla, you had something earlier, did you want it added? Or are we good, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, I wasn't sure how our chat room stuff worked at, at ours. If we are having a chat room in ours, then, then I think we need to discuss that at the next meeting.
Okay, okay, we can do that, that's fine.
I have something, Priscilla's done, George.
Go ahead.
I'd like to not worry about the chat at all and just have a live meeting. I don't know if we can have it at, at the high school. You know, when I was there for orientation with my freshman daughter, Mr. Hudson did a really good job of taping stuff off. I, I'm not, I haven't, as a public person, I didn't go to many board meetings when I was just, you know, working. I'm still working, but I, anyway, what I'm trying to say is, I don't think a lot of people go to the board meetings. So maybe, maybe we can have it at the high school. I'm, I'm not sure how that would work with the safety and touching of things and all that kind of stuff. But I'm game to do that. And for the next, next agenda item for next month, I definitely would like somewhere, you know, an update, official update, a time, you know, a timeline on when we plan to open or if Mr. Pratt's meeting with, you know, administration or task force, you know, an update on that. And what the plan is if, if there is a sickness, because, you know, it's getting into winter. People are going to get, uh, somebody's going to get a cold and I don't want that to be confused as COVID. So, you know, what, what's the plan? What's the, how many sicknesses will, how many COVID sicknesses will cause the school to shut down? I don't know how to put that into an agenda item, but if it's one, you know, I know Vermont Academy, it's five, so.
So just so I'm clear, update on the timeline, or some sort of planning, all right? And then the last part, what, if, if somebody suspected, what does that look like? Suspected of being contracting COVID, what would that look like? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I don't know, let me, let me think on that, you know, don't, I just want to make sure I ask it correctly, I guess.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other agenda items? And I also want to
Update on busting.
Update on busting, okay.
Yeah, and, and the plan for, a plan for opening.
Yeah.
So that we have it for the future, whether immediately or, or later.
That's kind of how I have, have it written here, so I'll, I'll send out to make sure that it's, it's what you guys were looking for. And backing up, so, so, yeah, we didn't meet in person this time because I couldn't, not couldn't, I didn't. I had a couple of weeks here, so I didn't secure a location. Problem is extra people in school buildings, that sort of thing. So just as a FYI, I'm looking toward trying to get to the, use the town hall just as the, you know, select board and as the town board meets down there. So I'm, I'm looking at some sort of, so avenue with that. We've been also, of course, incorporating, incorporating Zoom, we're getting a lot of people showing up and that's, that's great. And some people still have compromising situations who wouldn't be able to join us personally, who may be involved. So stay tuned, I'm hopeful that can happen. It may not be for next meeting, which brings us to next meeting. Our next normally scheduled meeting would be next week, is that right? I can't find the calendar on these things. The next week is
21st.
Okay, so we're usually the second and the last Monday, is that right?
Second, first and third.
First and third? How did I, regardless, anyway, so if it's all the same to everybody else, I'd like to have a meeting on Monday. I know we just had one, maybe it can be short, maybe we can strip this thing, this agenda down. But if everybody else is okay, I mean, you know, get us back on schedule and I felt like this was a really long time between meetings. So if there's no objections, I'd like to, I'd like to look toward, toward next Monday. No objections. Next Monday, the 21st, next meeting at 5:30. I'll send something out, maybe we can, like I said, strip the agenda down, just maybe, maybe just for updates. I don't, I don't, I'm not 100% yet, but I, I, I think it's important to keep connected. So as long as there's nothing else, call this meeting adjourned.